6:30 with the Police Civilian Review Board and I'll be conducting a presentation there. So I just made you co-host. If Dave pops on, Dave Norris, I'll make him co-host as well. And I'll be on until about 6:15. So I'll take care of any public comment until that point.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. The one thing that I'm using another device to host this meeting, so I don't have access to my timer that I is usually usually visible. So I'll just keep time and let you know when time is up.
Perfect, thank you.
And Chair Rutger, if you can hear me.
Yep, hi.
Hi, I'll just let you know when time is up on any public comment.
Great, thank you.
It's it's three minutes for the work sessions, correct?
That is a very good question. I think we just generally assume it's three minutes for any public comment.
I know sometimes it's two and sometimes it's three depending on the Border Commission, so.
Yeah, I, you know. I don't know if that's written anywhere, but let's say it's three and lately we haven't had a huge number. So it's not, right now, it's not a, not a big deal.
Sure. Okay, I'll go ahead and facilitate any public comment until I have to jump off around 6:15. I'll still have access to this meeting, but I'll give an audio audio cue if need be, once that timer is done.
Wonderful.
Hey, Joe, Ms. Height will be presenting the admin plan and she does have a a presentation to present. So will she be able to share a screen?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll go ahead and allow her to share the screen. I'm doing that now. And you'll have access to that too, John, since you're co-host. And we are, it is five o'clock, so we are currently streaming on our social sites.
Okay, great. Why don't we let everyone, give everyone a couple more minutes to to log in? I did hear from Ms. Slaughter that she won't be joining us. Let's see, it's 5:04. You think we should get started, Mr. Sales?
I think that may be a good idea. Some people might want to catch, I think there's a budget work session today. But some people may want to jump on that. I think some housing is going to be discussed.
Okay, okay, so let's go ahead. Hello, everyone. I think I can see everyone. So this is a virtual work session for the Charlottesville Redevelopment and Housing Authority, Board of Commissioners, November 12th, 5:00 PM. And let me read, we are meeting according to Governor Northam's Executive Order Number 53. Governor Northam issued an executive order EO 53 restricting public gatherings of greater than 10 persons. Accordingly, Code 2.2-3708.2A3 permits public bodies to meet electronically to discuss business required or necessary to operation of the public body and discharge of its lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities in times of emergencies and to address COVID-19. Therefore, this meeting is being held electronically pursuant to Virginia law because the COVID-19 pandemic makes it impractical and unsafe to assemble a quorum physically in a single location. All right, and we'll see, do a roll call of commissioners. I don't think.
I don't see Les down here, but I can take it.
Okay, thanks.
Chair Rutger.
Here.
I think she's here.
Who did you say? Sorry.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Green. I'm sorry.
Here, present.
Commissioner Osteen.
Here.
Commissioner Goldblatt.
Present.
Commissioner Mayor Walker. Commissioner Slaughter. Have a quorum.
Okay, great. And we'll do a quick moment of silence.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, did he get Miss Henry?
Here.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay, I mean.
All right, let's do a short more moment of silence before we get started. Wonderful, okay. Does anyone have any announcements, meeting reminders, anything they'd like to make sure those listening know about at this time?
We do have the emergency meeting tomorrow from 2:00 to 4:00 o'clock with Charlottesville Police Department and others. So I would love people who are here to to know about that.
Right. And I'm assuming, I think Mr. Norris or Mr. Sales, that if you're looking for the link to join that, would that be on the website?
I don't think it's on site now.
It is on the website.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you look under CRHA Board Agendas, the link is on there.
Okay, great, wonderful, thanks.
And flyers will go out to all the sites. Today, they went out to West Haven. We had a bunch of rain, so we didn't get it out to the other sites, but I'll get it out early in the morning.
Wonderful, thank you. And our main work for this evening is discussing the Housing Choice Voucher Admin Plan and an update on the annual plan. But we are opening to public comment right now. I think it doesn't have to be about that. I just wanted to give a preview. It looks like Mr. Collins is here. Anyway, does anyone have a comment at this time? Let's see, how do we?
I'm unmuted.
Just let Brandon Collins in the room. Brandon, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Hey, y'all, it's been a really busy week for Housing Authority. I know you all have been working on admin plan and annual plan for a little bit now. It's been hard for far to coordinate written comments to these just yet, but we do, as always, appreciate the coordination. Looking forward to your discussion tonight. I have, some of us have reviewed some of the annual plan and particularly enthusiastic about, you know, looking at homeownership, making sure you're doing all the correct things, thinking ahead in terms of what needs to be done for redevelopment. I think one big thing that typically happens with the annual plan, in the past, it has not been consistent with the city's consolidated plan or the area consolidated plan. And we usually have some kind of comment about that. It's almost always because the consolidated plan itself was not consistent with itself and it wasn't really y'all's fault. But I think that's been corrected really with the consolidated plan, so that will be nice to hopefully say that, you know, it is consistent. The other is, you know, we've, we've had issue pretty much every year with how relationship with police department is reported to HUD. That, and again, this is really no fault of y'all's, but I think the kind of coordination, receiving reports from police department at board meetings, for example, those are the types of things that should be improved. And in the past, it really seems to be lack of involvement by the police and not so much something y'all do. And I think, you know, given everything that's going on, maybe some discussion of what that might look like in the annual plan might be warranted as well. Otherwise, we're busily working through the plan, comparing it to the previous plans, and we will offer comments hopefully before the public meetings that are scheduled for next week. But I know you want to have a chance to respond to those comments before you submit and approve the plan. So that's it for now.
Great, thank you. And there'll be another time for a public comment at the end of the meeting as well. And we didn't announce, but maybe after we finish talking about, as we talk about the annual plan, we failed to mention the the community input meetings for that next week. So let's remember to do that. So should we move ahead with? Let's see here. Mr. Sales, how do you want to go about presenting the admin plan? Did Ms. Height want to do that?
Yes, the HTV manager, Ms. Melinda Height, will be presenting the revised admin plan for approval tonight.
Okay. Okay, all right, well, let's go ahead and start with that. And we do have a resolution here after we have discussion over the presentation.
Okay, so I am going to attempt to share my screen real quick because we have put together a little bit of a PowerPoint to help us get through the 17 chapters that is the admin plan. I did do my best, well, I did my best to pick out the key areas in which, you know, there's been some drastic changes, most for the better. So I will go through this as quickly but as thoroughly as possible not to tire everybody up tonight. And just to give some key topic areas like I discussed, and you know, if there's any questions about any areas, would you guys like to talk about them while we're in that chapter or hold them to the end? What would be best for you?
I know that some people are going to have to jump off to go to the city budget session, so perhaps you could talk about them as they come up so that those commissioners have a chance to ask as much as possible.
Absolutely perfect. And I'm going to apologize in advance if y'all hear Godzilla stomping through the house. My autistic son is a little bit off the hook this afternoon, so. And quick about it is, you're in our HCV administrative plan is the Housing Choice Voucher Formal Policy for the CRHA. The last known admin plan that we're aware of that was adopted was 2013. So with it being that long ago, there's been a lot of key PIH updates that are not included in the administrative plan right now. And that creates a lack of needs that are being met for both CRHA and our clients. What is the admin plan? The administrative plan is required by HUD. The purpose of the admin plan is to establish policies for carrying out the program in a manner consistent with HUD requirements and local goals. Can you guys see my screen, by the way? Okay, I'm assuming that's a yes. The administrative plan is a supporting document to the CRHA agency plan. It's always available for public review for anybody who wishes to see it. There's a copy in the offices. The admin plan is set forth to divide, to define CRHA's local policies for operation of the Housing Choice Voucher Program. And those policies are in accordance to federal laws and regulations. As we go through it, there'll be different things that we talk about where HUD says there's musts and there may's. As most of you know, in federal regulation, we're given the opportunity for mandatory policies. Those are the musts that HUD says we absolutely must do in accordance to the 24 CFR 982. And then HUD allows us some aspects where we may, those are the optional non-voting guidance. The musts are driven by legislation, regulations, current handbook notices, and legal opinions, where the may's are included in guidebooks, notices that have expired, but they're recommended that the HUD staff continues to utilize them. Current policies based upon HUD guidance is not mandatory, but they provide CRHA with what's called safe harbor laws. The safe harbor laws are recommendations and suggestions that are made consistent with mandatory policies. So it kind of gives CRHA, we're going to give you the leeway to do these things, but be careful that you're still following the guidelines. Let us give you the safe harbor. So we have adopted the NAMAC template for the HCV admin plan, and that template is based on safe harbor. But it also allows CRHA to focus on some of the key demographics for our area, for our clientele, for our local and state laws and regulations as well. So the key for this tonight is to literally touch on items that are newer than we're used to seeing and that will have some impact on the program. Normally, the admin plans have said that the jurisdiction in which CRHA will lease up vouchers has been the city of Charlottesville only. We are working on a MOU with Albemarle, Flavanna, Green, and Nelson. All but Albemarle will be through BHDA, Albemarle County, of course, will be with Albemarle County, to allow a greater jurisdiction to be able to utilize the number of vouchers that HUD has granted us to use. 533 households leasing up in the city of Charlottesville alone would probably not be very feasible since the city of Charlottesville itself is very small and pertains a lot of college housing. So that's a big change for the Housing Authority. It's going to allow us greater span of places for people to be able to find housing that they can afford. As most of you are aware, there are some key areas of the HCV partnerships. There is the HUD funding that comes to CRHA. Through that, you know, we have to have the program regulations and be in good standings with that in order to continue to get that funding. That funding allows us to minister a program to both participants and to landlords. So once you get down to that CRHA administration part, it becomes a very contractual business. The HCV participants are in a contract with CRHA, which is their voucher, and it has very specified family obligations to continue to receive housing. And then the owners are in a contract with CRHA as well through the Housing Assistance Payment Contract, which gives the owner very specific guidelines and all that they have to follow. And then, of course, the family and the landlord go into their own contract, which is the lease. While CRHA doesn't have a hand in that lease part per se, it does, we do have some ability to, you know, make sure that the landlord's holding up his end of the lease as well as the families holding up their end of the lease. Chapter two of the MN is solely based on fair housing and equal opportunities. This chapter explains the laws and HUD regulations requiring, required by CRHA to affirmatively further civil rights and fair housing in all federally assisted housing programs. This is the spirit of the laws and implemented through consistent policies and processes. The responsibility to further nondiscrimination pertains to all areas of CRHA's Housing Choice Voucher Program. Part of it, part of this chapter talks about reasonable accommodations in HCV program. Most of these rules that you see on the screen now have been in place for quite some time. The newer ones to the policy right now would be those last two bullet points. The equal house, access to housing programs regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity. That rule was clarified in 2014, so that would not have been in that 2013 policy. And then the VAWA, the Violence Against Women's Act, it was revamped in a 2017 update to give more protection in regards to the aspects of the VAWA rules. At any time, if there would be more than one civil right law that would apply to a situation, the laws would be read and applied together. When it comes to reasonable accommodations, it looks a lot different for HCV than it would for the public housing program. In public housing, CRHA is basically the landlord, so there's a lot more to the reasonable accommodation policies for that program. For the HCV program, we would be focusing mostly on policy or, you know, accommodations of people who may need a live-in aide, so they would need a larger subsidy standard or someone who would need a larger subsidy standard because they would have medical equipment and supplies, so they would need extra storage room for that. The biggest thing with HCV would be if someone couldn't make it to the office or we would need to conduct home visits or virtual re-examinations to be able to allow them to stay in compliance with their annual requirements. And then again, like I said, the increased voucher payment standards for necessity to be able to have equal opportunity to the program. Chapter three talks about our eligibility criteria. Nothing much has really changed in this aspect. The family still has to qualify under the income stipulations that HUD puts in place through the so HUD does surveys basically of the area median incomes. And for the HCV program, the family has to be at or below the very low standards. They, you know, they still have to provide their social security numbers and their immigration or citizenship status. They still have to provide, sign the consent forms that are required of them in order to be eligible. And they still have to make sure that there are certain past behaviors that HUD says that we have to prohibit if they have participated in those. The biggest one with the eligibility is that first bullet point that qualifies as a family is defined by HUD. Before, families tend to lean more towards a parent and children or, you know, multiple people to be a family. Now HUD has defined family as any, one person can be a household, it can be a family, or, you know, multiple people can be a family. It's not specifically by marriage or blood relation or, you know, the type of things that they used to qualify a family as. Income limits, we could just kind of talked about this. They're only verified at admission. If you come into the program because you are at that very low income limits for your family size, your income will never rule you out of the program from there. I kind of say that and then I kind of think, well, that's not true. But we will never look at your income and say you're no longer qualified to be in the program. What can happen is that you can increase your income to the point to where we don't make an assistance payment for you. And we'll talk about that a little bit more when we get into the income calculation part. In the past, HUD used to say that college students could not participate in the HCV program. Studies were done. It was found out that in order to be able to afford college, some students may need assistance with things like housing. So they changed the law or the rules that say that a student can participate in the Housing Choice Voucher if they're of legal contract age for their state, if they've established a household separate from their parents for at least one year prior to applying for the HCV program, or if they meet the US Department of Education's definition of independent student. So this has opened up some avenues for students to be able to have kind of the cushion they need to be able to afford to further their education. There are some reasons for denial of application. HUD does lay out some specifics as to why we would have to, the family, a family that does not meet the eligibility criteria discussed in this chapter will be denied assistance. In this section, it discusses other situations and circumstances in which it denies assistance mandatory for CRHA and those in which denial is optional for CRHA. Criminal activity, per that CFR there, if any household member is currently engaged in or has engaged in any of the following criminal activities within the past three years, the family will be denied assistance. HUD defines drug-related criminal activity as illegal manufacturer, sell, distribution, or use of drugs, or the possession of a drug with intent to manufacture, sell, or distribute. And they define criminal activity as one of the elements that uses, attempts to use, or threatens the use of physical force, which was likely to cause serious bodily injury to property or property damage. A criminal activity that may threaten the health, safety, or right of peaceful enjoyment of the premises by other residents or persons residing in immediate vicinity, and by immediate vicinity, they mean within a three-block radius. And criminal activity that may threaten the health or safety of property owners, management staff, or persons performing contract administrative functions on behalf of CRHA. They go further to talk about any conviction for drug-related or violent criminal activity within the past three years and that records of arrests for drug-related or violent criminal activity within the past three years, although the record of arrest would not be the sole basis for the denial. It would encourage an investigation from there.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, definitely.
And just thinking of the arrest, the past three years, if someone's looking for a voucher, anyone in that family cannot have, I'm just trying to, is there wiggle room, like you're saying, to look more, so that there's an investigation to see if the drug-related charge is, you know, serious enough? I guess I'm just wondering how, do people ever come in and get an investigation to allow them to be part of the program?
Yes, so this screen will talk about, yeah. So we do look at the seriousness of the case, especially with regards to other residents and their safety. The effect that the denial would have on other members of the family who were not involved in the action or the failure to act. The extent of participation of the individual family members. You know, was there a disability that may have led to it? Was there an act of domestic violence or dating violence? And then also the length of time since the violation occurred, like, was that person potentially a minor at that time? Or has there been, you know, a record of, you know? Or um has there been, you know, a record of, you know, uh therapies or treatments or anything since then that would give you a likelihood that it wouldn't happen again in the future? Um, like I said, the record of arrest would not be used for the sole basis of denial. It could trigger an investigation determining whether the applicant um actually engaged in a disqualifying criminal activity. Um, we would obtain additional information, you know, police reports, arrest um records or, you know, any type of um uh institutionalization that would come from that. And I said that we would talk about, you know, statements from witnesses and all, but I don't know how far that would go because that kind of, my opinion, leads to a hearsay-type situation. Um, if if we were going to look at uh witness statements or anything, I think that would be part of the the criminal charges the police file. Um, evidence of criminal conduct that would be con- that will be considered if indicated and demonstrated a risk for safety and or property. Um, you know, if it's something where, I mean, th- there's so many avenues to this and the fact that it isn't an automatic denial, we get to look into it further, I think helps the case here. Um, it doesn't say automatically you have to go, and in the past, there used to be a one-strike policy and that was it. So, you know, here we require the applicant to provide us the evidence that there has been um, you know, clean, clean record centers or types of uh drug rehabs or other types of like anger management, things like that, that would help us be able to say, all right, so we had this, it was in the timeframe that we're not allowed to admit, but we're going to look into this further and see, you know, where we can go with that. Does that help a little bit?
Uh, yes, thank you. I just, um, yep, and I assume so it's sort of uh upon the applicant to provide um evidence. And then also, I assume there's several programs in town that could be um part of their rehabilitation where
And it's not something that we see a whole lot. Um, in the past, when this has been um something that has come to light, you know, there, there's been, um, if it was something really, really fresh and, you know, still actively going on, then it was something that we could work with the probation officers or um whoever it is that they were working with to try to clear it up for themselves so that we could almost kind of like a repayment plan for not paying your rent, you know, we're going to do this based on the fact that you've got this requirement that you have to do to, you know, stay in the community as long as you're meeting your requirements with your probation officer or your therapist or whoever it is you're working with, then you'll stay in good standing for the program. So there are avenues that we can look into to not automatically say you can't come join our program. Screen don't want to change. Here we go. How we're going to accept applications has changed a little bit for us. So in the past, when the waitlist would open, um, we would immediately have the applicant fill out that like nine to twelve-page application, uh have to bring all of your proof of uh social security numbers, photo IDs, birth certificates, proof of income, just everything that we would need at that point in time. Um, and, you know, it it's not a quick process when you're looking at mass sleep, uh mass applications. And, you know, some people wouldn't show up because they didn't have all those things. So there is now a two-step process to this. If we are going to open our waitlist and we think that we're going to issue a voucher to everybody that sixty days of the data application, then yes, that's going to be the process we do. We're going to start the eligibility process the day of application um so that, you know, that speeds up the process in order to be able to get them to the If we're going to open up that waitlist and we don't think we're going to touch those applications within sixty days, then we're going to do what's called the the two-step application process. We're initially going to take a very one-sheet basic information, who are you, where do you live, and how can we contact you? Um, and things like social security numbers and all that we need to populate our waitlist. Um, this will allow us to take a, you know, the number of applications that we need a lot quicker. And since any verifications that we utilize for eligibility or any other process in the program should not be greater than sixty days old, it saves the applicant from having to repeat the process over and over and over again until we're actually at the point where we can issue them a voucher. Once we accept that application, we'll send them written notification of their preliminary eligibility determination saying we've received your application, you are now on our waitlist, within ten days of receiving that application. Um, putting them on that waitlist and telling them that they are preliminary, cleminally eligible, is that a word? Um, does not in fact mean that they are eligible. It means that we've accepted your application, you've given us what we needed to get you on our waitlist to potentially receive assistance. And that final determination of eligibility will be made once we select them from that waitlist and start the eligibility complete process. Um, applications will be placed on the waitlist according to the date and time of application and the preference for CRHA's HCV waitlist, which is resident of the city of Charlottesville at the time of application. We're going to change a little bit how we um announce the opening of the waitlist. I am not going to pretend like I know that exact number of business days that we used to notify um the community that the waitlist was going to be open, but now it will, the community will be notified ten days and business days prior to the opening of the waitlist. We will give public notice through um media outlets like we always have, you know, we'll utilize the Daily Progress, Seville Today, NBC Twenty-Nine, CBS Nineteen, and other um media outlets as we can present it out there. We'll also post it on our website and the Facebook page. And we will continue the efforts to outreach by working with community partners um who may assist the low-income individuals who would qualify for our programs. Um, I will submit a copy of the applications and forms to those agencies so that they can assist uh their clientele uh to get those back into us. Um, and um we'll make sure that, of course, agencies that work with the dis- disabled community um will get that information as well. We will close our waitlist when it's estimated that there's going to be a waiting period of house assistance of twenty-four months for the most current applicants. Um, if we were to be granted funding for a specific uh demographics, uh so like we're working on the mainstream and that's for individuals sixty and under who have a disability who are facing homelessness or being um released from a uh institutional-type setting. So we may um elect to open a waitlist just long enough to get the applicants we need for some, for a program like that. Or of course, when we proceed through our um redevelopment and we're ready to issue project-based vouchers, um that would be a different type of application process that we could like uh open the list for. As of right now, the list is for HCV only. The update purge and removal, it's changed just a little bit. It's not um really drastic. In the past, every twelve months, our policy said that we would purge the waitlist by sending out um the purge notices and requiring the family to send it back to us. Now we will just purge our list as needed um to ensure that all applicant and applicant information is If we're in a stalemate, we've used all our money, nobody's moving around in the program, we wouldn't bug the participants every twelve months to update that information. If we're in a hot time like we are right now where we are, you know, leasing up like crazy, then it might be that we purge that list a little more often. Um, the family fails to respond within fifteen business days, they will be removed from the waitlist without notice, further notice. If the notices returned from the post office um as no longer at that address with no forwarding address, then they'll be removed from the waitlist with no notice. If the notices returned from the post office with a forwarding address, we would resend that notice to the address indicated to us. That one's new before it would fall under the two previous. Um, and then we would allow them the fifteen business days from the date the letter was resent. Um, and then if by chance the family's removed from the waitlist for failure to respond, uh but we determined that it was an admin error inside CRHA, then we would reinstate the family um and make sure that they're brought up to date on the waitlist. The voucher briefing, this has not changed either. Um, the voucher briefing has a long set of um items that have to be provided to the uh participant during the briefing session. Um, none of that has changed. I think maybe there's some additional VAWA forms that will go out. Um, well, they've been going out, but they'll go out as part of our new briefing packet as well. Um, the briefing packet does outline the family's obligations, which are detailed on the voucher form itself. So if anybody's ever interested in those, I can gladly send you a copy of the voucher that you can read through those. Um, and then the big key change for this chapter would be our subsidy standards. Um, the subsidy standards are known as the size of the voucher or the size of the household that the individual gets support from. The previously uh CRHA was just being um uh a subsidy, a bedroom size per head of household, a bedroom size per um children of different sex, uh children of different generations, uh different um generations as a whole, whether it be uh children or other household members. And this has um not been viable to the program. This has created very large unit sizes with very large hap payments. And our ACC utilization has been in the low two hundreds, but yet we're maxing out the subsidy that HUD has given us. So as part of our action plan with HUD, one was revamping our admin plan and the other was revamping our subsidy standard. The HUD regulations in regard to subsidy standards say they can be as strict as two people per sleeping room, no matter age, sex, relationship. Um, and even a living room is considered a sleeping room. That means a two-person household could have a zebra bedroom subsidy. We're not going to go that stringent. That's just not fair. Um, but we are tightening it down to where it's one bedroom per head of household, which would include spouse or co-head. Um, and then one bedroom per two persons within the household. So this will um allow us to be able to use the hap subsidy dollars that we're receiving to assist a greater number of individuals in our community versus fewer numbers of uh individuals being assisted and utilizing the full dollars that we're receiving. The vouchers, um, this hasn't changed a whole lot. The vouchers now are currently being issued for sixty days. Uh, that gives them sixty days to seek a place to reside and turn in a request for tenancy approval. Um, we are currently already providing extensions to those up to another additional sixty days. Uh, now CRJ uh will automatically approve two thirty-day extensions upon writ request. So at the end of their sixty days, if they have not had success and leasing up, they provide us written notice that they need an extension. We'll grant thirty days at a time for two more um times. At the end of that, we can still approve additional extensions. Uh, but it would kind of be like um unemployment where you have to provide that you're seeking, actively seeking your housing, or provide us with what obstacles have been in your way that you've not been able to seek housing. Um, and the uh additional requests beyond that hundred and twenty days, we will require the family to provide documentation to support why that additional time is needed. Uh, Mr. Selvin, I did kind of um a tally on the most recent lease-up that we did, and out of the hundred and thirty-three vouchers that we issued, it's looking about seventy-five, seventy-six day average for, from the date of issuance to the date of um lease signage. So, you know, hundred and twenty days, if if we can do that during a pandemic, I'm hoping that we can do that outside of a pandemic. But the caveat's still there that we can provide additional should there be an obstacle that is preventing them from finding housing in the hundred and twenty days that is given. The income and subsidy determinations. So, the um HUD regulations specify that income sources from uh the household means all monies that go into the household on behalf of the family um based on an annual twelve-month period. So if somebody's employed for twelve months, we calculate their anticipated annual income on the income they anticipate earning during that twelve months. Um, there is a lot of our participants who work airmark and they're off two weeks here, two weeks here, some of them off two months at a time. So they will have the option to decide whether they want their ten-month income calculated as their rent but spread over the twelve-month period, so they have a smaller rent to pay during that time, or they can choose to do um their anticipate, so they're, they're anticipating their annual income at ten months of twelve dollars an hour, forty hours a week, um that can be broke over the ten months and then they can have their two months uh without rent to pay other than the minimum rent at that time. So, the annual income, you know, it means all income sources that are derived within twelve-month period time, it can include assets. It can include um family members who are monthly providing income to another family member to um be able to uh pay their monthly expenses. And then their adjusted income would be that annual income minus the established HUD regulations that require CRHA to subtract five mandatory deductions um if the family qualifies for them. So if a family has minor children, each one of those minor children would have a four-hundred-and-eighty-dollar-a-year deduction taken off that annual income. If that family would have an adult disabled child, that child is still considered a dependent, so they would still get that four-eighty off. Um, if there's an elderly or disabled family, there's a four-hundred-dollar deduction that comes off that annual income. If there's an elderly or disabled family and they have medical expenses that exceed the sum of three percent of their annual income, that unre- unreimbursed medical expense would then come off of their annual income. And then if there's a disability expense for a disabled family um for attended care or auxiliary apparatuses that would en- enable a family member to work, um then those uh deductions can be taken off of that annual income as well. And then childcare expenses, uh reasonable within the limits of childcare expenses for the locality, so it's usually based off of what social services would pay. Um, and they cannot exceed the the annual income earnings, the same with the disability um apparatus expenses, those cannot exceed the earnings. That would become your adjusted uh annual income, and then that is used to calculate what the family's share of rent would be by calculating that against um a utility allowance that is provided to the family uh based on the utilities that they would be responsible for paying. And then that subsidy standard according to that bedroom size that we had just talked about. And I'm sorry, I know this is probably put in half of y'all. The um HUD HUD requires that we have a minimum rent. CRHA has established theirs at thirty-five percent. Uh, I'm sorry, thirty-five dollars. So the um family would pay either the highest of um thirty percent of their monthly adjusted income or ten percent of their monthly gross income or that minimum rent. Uh, the family, if they pay utilities out of pocket, we do calculate a utility allowance based on what utilities they pay, what type of um um housing unit is, is it an apartment, is it a single-family home? And then um we add that utility allowance to the rent the landlord is asking for the property they're going to reside in to get their gross rent. Uh, that gross rent is subtracted from that payment standard. And um if there's any overage, that is added to thirty percent of their income. And if they do not, um, they cannot exceed the forty percent of their income, or they would not qualify for the property that they're looking for. The hap, the Housing Assistant Payment, is the portion that CRHA is going to pay directly to the landlord. And then the uh tenant portion is what they are going to pay to the landlord. The gross rent for the uh family's unit, um minus what that uh tenant portion is, is how we come to the hap. Um, the subsidy for the family, if it exceeds um the rent to owner, then CRHA does pay the family a utility reimbursement. The payment standards are based off of that subsidy standard that we talked about. Um, the payment standards defined as the maximum monthly assistant payment for a family assisted in the voucher program. Um, the payment standard is the lower of either the payment standard for the family unit size, um which is that subsidy standard, the number of bedrooms they qualify for, or the payment standard of the actual size of the dwelling unit. So if somebody has a three-bedroom subsidy and they choose a two-bedroom unit, then their rent would be calculated on the two-bedroom payment standard instead of the three that they would qualify for if they had rented a three-bedroom unit. Um, CRJ requires to pay a monthly Housing Assistant Payment for the family that is the lower of either the payment standard for the family minus their portion or the gross rent for the family minus um family's unit or the gross rent for the family minus family's unit minus their portion. The family unit size increases or decreases during the HAP term. The family's unit size must be used to determine the new payment standard for the family, beginning at their first annual reexamen. So if someone leaves the household and they no longer qualify for that three-bedroom standard, at their next reexam, we would lower them to the two-bedroom standard. This chapter hasn't changed at all. HUD provided all housing authorities with the EIV, which is Enterprise Income Verification. EIV is a website that compiles all earnings reported to Social Security Administration, all Social Security benefits, unemployment benefits. And by the information that we send to HUD monthly on our reporting, they know who resides in our jurisdiction and they provide us with this EIV. EIV is always the top of the hierarchy for verifications. And with that, we're supposed to compare it to the other incomes or the other verifications of income that the participants provide to us. The participant can provide a third-party doc, which would be a pay stub or a letter of hire or a letter of termination. If they don't have that information, then we can send a verification that the participant signs to whoever needs to verify for them. If we can't get that back, then we can call and say, hey, we've been trying to get this. Can you just give me this information and do a third-party oral verification? And if all of the above fails, then we can do a tenant certification to get the information that we need to verify income and assets and expenses. Chapter eight talks about the housing quality standards. There has been some pretty big changes for CRHA in this one. The housing quality standards is the inspection process of the unit that is being assisted through our program. There are multiple types of inspections that can take place in that unit. HUD requires that every unit entering into the HCV program have an initial inspection. The initial inspection, make sure that the unit that they're moving into is the requirements of decent sanitation. They also, that's also used for rent reasonableness that we'll talk about here in a few minutes. In the past, our policies have said that we are going to inspect all HCV units on an annual basis. It's been several years ago that HUD has given the housing authorities permission to move those annual inspections. So CRHA is going to adopt this moving forward. And all of our HCV units will be inspected on a 24-month basis unless one happens to fail due to a health and safety issue. And then that owner will be put on a 12-month inspection process until we no longer see those types of problems. That sounds scary to some of you, I'm sure, but however, the participant or the owner can request a special inspection. If there is something going on in the unit and the owner's not addressing it and the participant asks for our assistance, we will do a special inspection. And the same for the owner. If the owner calls and says, hey, this is going on in my unit, could you come do an inspection on it to help me enforce, you know, that part of the program, then we would do that as well. And then the program is required to do an annual reporting to HUD, the CMAP, the Section Eight Assessment Management Program. And in that, there has to be a quality control while the HQS inspection, not all of them, a percentage of HQS inspections that have happened throughout the year. So CRHA has several certified inspectors. If they go out and do an inspection, 3% of those inspections have to be quality-controlled. They have to be quality-controlled within three months of that initial inspection happening. And then those measures are taken to make sure, A, inspectors are doing what they need to, the inspections are in compliance with HQS. And then we report to HUD that, yes, we are doing what we need to in regards to the HQS process and that the units that we're leasing are, leasing up are decent, safe and sanitary. No HAP contract can be approved without a rent reasonableness being done on the unit. So what rent reasonableness is, is ensuring that property owners and landlords are not charged more for an assistant unit because they know the government's paying the bill for it. It's making sure that when they provide us with their request for tenancy approval, saying it's a three-bedroom unit with two baths and, you know, brand-new carpeting or brand-new flooring and things like that, that they are, the rent that they're asking for because they're saying those things are there are actually there. Part of the HQS process is to make notation, does it have the new flooring, does it have three bedrooms, does it have two baths? Does it have updated appliances? You know, they're saying that the tenant is not responsible for paying for the stove and refrigerator, is the stove and refrigerator in the unit? So CRHA has not been successful with rent reasonableness for quite some time. The old process used to be a survey would go out to the area landlords, asking them to take time out of their busy schedule to provide us information on other properties that they own that's not receiving assistance. And that data's pretty intel, like we need to know the location, what demographics within the community, the quality of your property, how many bedroom sizes, what type of unit is it, how old is it, do you offer any amenities? Are there any housing services? Do you provide onsite, offsite maintenance? Are there any utilities you provide? The owners have never really been responsive in sending that information back when we attempted to receive it, so we can never build our internal database. There were some, a couple of websites that were used for a while, but you know HUD said, no, we need, we need a little more detailed information. So CRHA has contracted with Nailrod and purchased their Easy Rent Reasonableness system. With this system, Nailrod took care of all of the surveys. They collected all the data that we needed. They hit all those key factors that are required. And this is also a requirement for CMAP. They hit all those key factors that are needed so that we can be in compliance with this requirement from HUD. And it's a very easy software to use and we have found it very beneficial since we started using it. So we have made sure that we made, that this information is in the policy for when it's adopted, that this is how the rent reasonableness will be determined moving forward. The company will make sure that no data over 12 months old remains in the database and they will continuously update it for us as required by HUD.
Could I ask two quick questions before?
Most definitely.
So the students, do they have to be city residents before they apply? Or can they just come in, can they just apply because they're students?
We will accept applications from anybody who puts in an application. They will not get the local preference if they are not residing in the city of Charlottesville when they apply. And one of the student requirements is if they don't meet the federal, the Department of Education's independent student criteria, then they have to have established residency for a year on their own prior application. So if they're coming to us as a sophomore, then they would already have that local preference.
Okay. And I had another question. Sorry.
You got my email. Don't hesitate to shoot me it. Now I'll answer it for you. The lease contract, this area has not changed a whole lot. The leasing up of the program remains the same. The participants are given a bunch of information in the briefing. One of the items that, go ahead.
I remember. Families who are having difficulties, you know, getting apartments for their vouchers, do we keep that information? Like, are there any statistics, is it regarding whether discriminatory practices are happening? Or do, once they, it doesn't, once they're not able to lease up, then we just move on? Are we monitoring that in any way?
We are. I mean, if anybody, one of the things they're giving in the briefing packet is all of the fair housing information, how to make a complaint, things like that. If they contact us and say, you know, anything that leads us to believe that there's a discriminatory action going on, we do not hesitate to provide them with legal aid's information so that they can step in on their behalf. Virginia law in July passed some legislation to where properties can no longer say, we don't accept Section Eight. As long as the participant meets the qualifications that anybody else would meet, then they have to accept the Section Eight. That's not been the practice for forever. And it went even further to say if they don't have the income, like say it's one of those properties where you have to make 3.5% or 3.5 times your rental amount in income in order to qualify. They have to utilize whatever portion of the HAP that we're going to pay as qualified income. So I can tell you in, from 2016 to 18, when I was here, we did see a lot of people struggle to find a place to lease. We do have a lot of participants in the community tax credit properties because, you know, they met those criteria or they wouldn't have met our criteria. But since this new law has taken place, we are seeing a great diversity of where individuals are leasing up. And we're not seeing much issue with people being able to lease up. The biggest thing we do hear is they don't have the credit. Or, you know, somebody with absolutely no income, even with the HAP portion, don't meet the income requirements for some landlords. But I feel we've had a great success with this most recent lease-up. The numbers I provided, Mr. Sells today, said we issued like 133 vouchers. And so far, only 20 some of those have expired. And we have leased up right at 70 of them and we have like 13 more in the process of leasing up right now. So I, I think that the new laws that passed in July have really helped that not be the issue anymore.
Plus, I'll add one more to that. So we're working with Todd Nemeier from the Human Rights Commission to address any issues we do have, because we have had some source of income issues already with two individuals and one more recently that I found out about yesterday with Todd. So we are addressing those with legal aid and working with them whenever possible. And the last two have both been satisfactory decisions for the individual with the voucher. They have overturned their decision.
So back to the general leasing, in the briefing, the participants are given a lot of information. One of the things that they are provided with is the Request for Tenancy Approval. That's the form they give to the landlord when they, they find a place that they're interested in. That request gets filled out by the landlord. It has to be signed by both the landlord and the participant and come back to us. And that's where we start the process of leasing them up. One of the things HUD says that we have discretion on is that we can provide the owners screening information about the participants. CRHA will not do that. And that's not something that we'll participate in. We do encourage the landlords to do for our participants as they would everybody else in the community. And like I said, those new laws have really helped those seeking to use a housing choice voucher to find housing that they normally wouldn't be able to. The Request for Tenancy Approval must match all of the information provided to us on the lease. It must say the same amount of rents, the same utility responsible responsibility. We'll look at the lease to make sure that it lists the same household members that we have. We will make sure that, you know, the rent reasonableness data can be collected based on what they tell us on that rent request for tenancy approval. And then that starts the process for the inspection. And then from there, we go into the Housing Assistant Payment Contract. One thing we hear a lot is, where's my application to be an owner? So the housing authorities don't take applications for owners. We do, you know, we do make sure that they're not somebody who may have been on a list that basically was a slumlord and we decided not to do business with them any further. Or someone who knew someone moved out of their property, didn't inform us and collected, you know, a bunch of money that we had to work to recapture. But in the long scheme of things, we will make sure that you own the property by deed or personal property taxes. We will make sure that you provide us with a W-9 for tax purposes and then proof that you do have insurance on that, that property. Each lease that comes to us, the owners have to attach the HUD-provided tenancy addendum. So the tenancy addendum basically outlines those tenant responsibilities, the same ones that are the family obligations on the voucher. There is a requirement that for the first year, or for every new lease, there has to be a 12-month initial lease term. It can be greater than 12 months, but it has to be at least 12 months. And during that initial 12 months, the owner cannot raise the rent. Now, say we get a tenancy, a request for tenancy approval in that does not have, that the participant won't qualify for that rental amount under their subsidy standard in their income. We do go to bat at that point in time for the participant and we will have discussions with that owner to see if there's a potential of bringing that rent down where it needs to be for them to qualify. Or if maybe there's a different unit in the same community that might rent for a little bit less. We see that a lot with some of the newer properties. We've been very successful with that, with this new lease-up as well. We make sure that the owner is aware that they cannot charge anymore for security deposit for our participant than they would other participants and that they stay within the Virginia law, which is no more than two times the rent. We make sure that the owner is aware that they cannot charge any, any fees or anything outside of what's in that original lease. There can be no separate non-lease agreements between them. If the owner tells us that the tenant's responsible for this utility, this utility and this utility, then they can't turn around and charge them for something different in the lease terms. While we review the lease for those consistencies, we do not review the lease to make sure it's compliant with state and local law. If we see something funny, obviously, you know, if it's something that's just totally off from a normal lease contract or something, we may look into it a little bit more. But we can't make those legal determinations rather the lease is applicable. We would refer someone out to legal aid if, you know, they felt or we felt that it needed to have a second set of eyes. The HAP contract will be executed once the HQS is done. We've determined the rent responsibility. We've received the completed and executed lease. And that HAP contract has to be signed by both CRHA and the owner agent in order for payments to go out. The owner agent can stall that up to 60 days. But we won't pay the Housing Assistant Payment up until we have that signature. If they stall it past 60 days, then we do have the right to tell them that we're withdrawing the voucher and we're going to assist the participant to find additional housing. And that would be one of those situations where we would definitely extend the voucher because they had provided what they needed to and it wasn't their fault. They're in this situation right now. No rent increases, I think I already said this, will be permitted in that first term. If they wish to have rent increases after that first term, they need to let CRHA know 60 days in advance of when they want that to be increased. We will start the whole process over with the rent reasonableness to make sure that they're not asking for a larger increase than they qualify for. And we would notify the owner within 10 business days of whether we approved or denied their request. Chapter 10 talks about moving with
Could I ask you a quick question?
Most definitely.
Back to chapter nine, something you had said. If people want to be landlord, you said you don't check to see if those properties are legal?
No. So what, we don't have the landlord fill out any type of application and we don't approve them to be a landlord, so to speak. We do make sure that they provide us proof of ownership for the property. They have to provide us a W-9 for tax purposes because we will report that we paid this person this amount of money for the year. And they do have to provide us proof that the property is properly insured.
What if that property, and I've seen this time and time and time again, is an illegal dwelling?
Meaning?
Well, so right now you're going through the city and that's where leasing out, that's what I heard earlier. But you're looking at having some, an MOU from other localities. Other localities have different zoning regulations than these. So I would say that we probably should check to make sure that their zoning is in, this is a legal dwelling unit in this, in the home or next to the home or to the rear of the home. Otherwise, we've entered into a lease agreement for dwelling that somebody may not be legally, you know, maybe an illegal place to rent.
So after they provide legal ownership to us, we do go out to the property and do a complete inspection of the property.
But you don't check with any other, especially again, if you're going to have memorandum But you don't check with any other, especially again, if you're going to have memorandum to understand so that localities. Every locality has different zoning regulations and different zoning laws. I've worked, I personally, with my day job, have worked with several homeowners who have illegal dwellings on their property. Their property's not zoned for what they're doing. And we've had to find other locations for folks to rent. Because they've entered into a lease contract with someone and they don't have the right to have that dwelling on their property to begin with.
When you talk about dwellings that aren't allowed to be on the property, like is there an example of what you're speaking of?
There's an example where I may have turned my basement into a a, an apartment without the proper permits and without making sure it complies with zoning.
Okay, so the proof of ownership is either a deed or personal property taxes. And then when we do the inspections, there's very set guidelines that would approve or deny. So if you're saying that you've turned the basement into an apartment and there's no segregation between your upstairs and your downstairs, like, under the HQS, they have to have their own entrance and exit. They can't go through anybody else's dwelling area. They have to have their own kitchen area, their own bathroom area. So if it's just, you know, someone illegally renting out their basement, but it's not zoned as its own dwelling, like it doesn't have its own address, the owner and the participant cannot have the same address.
Zoning and building are two different things. So you can't go by the, you, you can't look at this and go by a the inspection. Do you have any idea what I'm talking about here? I mean?
I do, but I think there's enough governance in the HQS and the the approval of tenancy part that it would, it would catch if someone was, you know, illegally renting out just part of their own personal home. So if they were renting out a shed that was made into a, a single occupancy dwelling, you know?
I don't agree, but will agree to disagree.
Well, I tell you what, why don't you and I set aside some time so that we can go through those areas and it might make it a little more understandable?
For both of us.
For both of us, yes.
Absolutely.
You shoot me an email and we'll set up time to do that.
Absolutely.
Perfect. So we were talking about moves. Participants are allowed to move with continued assistance into additional continued assistance units. The, the family has the right to terminate a lease per the lease agreement. You know, the lease says sixty day notice to vacate at the end of the lease terms. You know, the owner accepts it, then that would be termination by the family. And then the owner has that right as well. The owners, at the end of the lease agreement, they say, we're not going to renew. Not at no fault of the tenant, the tenant's given permission to move with continued assistance. The owner gives the family a notice to vacate or commence actions of eviction or has obtained court judgment or other processes. This one gets a little bit murky because later on in termination, it talks about this a little bit further. But if the eviction is due to some reason other than a violation of the program, then we would provide the the participant a new voucher to seek additional housing. Obviously, the VAAL, we've talked about that quite a bit so far. If there's a risk of health or safety due to domestic or dating violence, sexual assault, stalking, then we would assist the family in moving from the area in which they reside. If we as CRHA terminate the HAP contract because there's been a breach from the owner, then we're going to assist the family with moving to a different unit. And then if the family's unit doesn't meet HQS-based standards, they've increased their family size or something along those lines, then we would again issue them a voucher to seek. We would deny a move if we were in a position where we were not receiving enough funding to cover our current expenses and that move would increase the housing assistance payment. That would include both residing in the jurisdiction and moving out of the jurisdiction under portability. And then, of course, we would deny the family's move with continued assistance if the family was in termination status for an action that was against the family obligation. We will not allow the family to move within the first initial year. And we will not allow the family to move more than once in a twelve month period. Unless, again, it's one of those reasons that's outside their control. And we've kind of already talked about this. Every year, every twelve months, the participants are required to do an annual reexamination. The participants also have the right to seek an interim reexamination for change of household or income composition. Household composition or family income. And then we would recalculate the family share and subsidy amount according to either one of those. The annual reexamination, this one's a little bit different. HUD is allowing more and more streamlining for income that is of a consistent source, SSI, social security, annuities, things that only increase every year based on the COLAs. If a family has ninety percent or more of their income coming from a fixed source, then we just need to verify the, we're not required to verify the non-fixed, if there's a percentage of non-fixed income in the household, we just, you know, do what we need to with that COLA rate increase and proceed forward. If the family has less than ninety percent of their income coming from a fixed source, then we can streamline the process of verifying that fixed income, but we must verify the non-fixed. The goal is to schedule annual reexamination seven hundred and twenty days prior to their anniversary date. The anniversary date is either going to be the effective date of their move in or their last annual reexamination. If a family moves, changes units, then that will become their new anniversary date and we'll recertify that. If the family has changes in circumstances between their annuals where their income decreases or their family size changes, then they must report that to CRHA within ten days of that change. They're not requested to get our permission, of course, if they've had a baby, adopted a baby, or have been awarded custody of a child through the courts. But they must request our permission prior to adding a new family member. That's a live-in aide, a foster child, a foster adult, or just someone else who is expected to stay in the unit for more than fourteen consecutive days or forty-five cumulative days in a twelve month period. If someone leaves the household, they need to notify CRHA immediately because the household subsidy is based on the number of people who reside in that household. Changes affecting income or expenses. If the family household has a change in income or expenses, they need to report it. If they report it and there's not, I think we've made the new policy to say if there is five hundred dollars or more income increase, we will complete a interim change, increasing the tenant's portion of rent. If it's less than five hundred dollars a month, we are going to note the file that they have done what they were supposed to. They notified us of the change of household income and there's no actions that we will take. If, of course, we already spoke about, if somebody moves in or out of the household, then we need to know that. The family may initiate interim if their income decreases and CRHA must process a rent change to capture that decreased income so that their rent portion decreases as well. If the, the family can notify us either verbally or in writing, if they provide us a verbal notice, we will follow up with the required forms that we need to be in audit compliance. The family share and subsidy is based off of, as we talk, the payment standards, the income, the payment standards are based off of how many people are in the household, what subsidy standard do we give them, and of course, the utility allowances that go into that calculation as well. If the subsidy standards or the payment standards change, there's a methodology in which we change the household income based on those. So if the payment standard increase, they'll be applied at the first annual reexamination after that increase. That will benefit the participant because of the payment standard increases. Most likely, their portion of rent will decrease. If the payment standard is decreased during the terms of the HAP contract, the decreased payment standard will not be applied until the second annual reexamination. Because the decreased payment standard most likely is going to increase the tenant's portion of rent. With the subsidy standard, if the family unit size changes, if someone, the user comes into the household and the subsidy standard changes, the, the change will be made to determine the payment standard. I meant the family's first annual reexamination. This would be if, this is, this is going to apply to all of our participants now. Once this is adopted, our subsidy standards will change. So at the family's first annual reexamination, we will be changing the subsidy standards for those who need, like those who need it changed. Not everybody will change at their first annual reexamination to meet the, the family size and the subsidy standard that they qualify for under this policy. We will notify the family. This is a little bit different. So this policy is saying that we're going to notify the family in writing and that that notification is going to break down what their, how their assistance payment was calculated, what was their annual income, what was their adjusted annual income, what's the rent, portion of rent that the housing authority is going to pay, what's the portion of rent they're going to pay. Previously, we were just providing them with, this is your change effective this date. This is what we're going to pay. This is what you're going to pay. But this one's a lot better because it's going to explain to them where those income amounts came from. And our software just went through an update and it provides us a really wonderful form. So it also takes away the potential for error for creating word documents every time we do a rent change. All of our notices will say that they have the right of an explanation of how that was calculated. And if they disagree, they have the right to an informal hearing. Termination of assistance. So the same with the applicant portion of it. HUD requires certain things, you know, have to be terminated. They give us approach is to terminate an assistance by evaluating decisions of whether to terminate due to actions or inactions of family members. The alternatives that we can consider in lieu of termination and criteria that will be used when deciding what actions to take. HUD policies that govern the owner's right to termination of assistance, I'm playing into this as well. So not only are the tenants held to, you know, a criteria, so are the owners. So if at any time the owner violates their agreements within the HAP contract, then CRHA can terminate the owner's rights as well. HUD requires us to terminate assistance if the family no longer requires assistance. So a few slides back, I had mentioned that the, the income counts when you come in and we don't really count it again for qualifications to the program. But that's not the case in my opinion because if someone increases their income, they become self-sufficient and we're no longer paying an assistance payment for them, then they can, they can stay a voucher holder for a hundred and eighty days without CRHA making a payment for them. They're paying all of their rent. At the end of that hundred and eighty days, if they've not had any change in income circumstances towards CRHA, they start paying for them again, then they would no longer be a voucher holder. So they have reached the point of self-sufficiency. We've not had to make a payment for them for six months. And they are self-sufficient enough to leave the program. CRHA would terminate the system if the family requested that we do so. If the family is evicted from the assisted unit for serious or repeat lease violations, if the family at any time refuses to provide any of the consent forms that they are required to do so under the, the federal regulations, if the family refuses to provide documentation of citizenship within the required timeframes, if they just, they fail to disclose or provide documentation of social security numbers, if there's ever a manufacturing or production of methamphetamines on federally assisted housing, if they are subject to the lifetime sex offender registry, or of course, if there's only a one-person household and they have expired. HUD mandatory terminations are pretty much the exact same as the denial of admission. Engaging in illegal use of drugs have a pattern of illegal drug use that interferes with the health, safety, and right and peaceful enjoyment of the other residents. If they have an abuse or a pattern of abuse of alcohol that threatens the health, safety, and rights. If they violated any of the family obligations to not engage in drug-related criminal activity, or if they violate the family obligations to not engage in violent criminal activity. HUD permits CRHA to terminate assistance under cer, other circumstances. The discretion's left up to us and it warrants consideration of the termination. If the family fails to comply with the family obligations under the program, the family member has been evicted from federally assisted housing in the last five years. These, these are the CRHA policies. I'm sorry, I forgot to say that. The family member has committed fraud, bribery, or other corrupt or criminal acts in connection with federal housing programs. The family currently owes rent to other PHAs in connection with the CHA. I'm sorry, with the Section Eight Program or Public Housing Assistance Act. The family's not reimbursed any PHA for amounts, and I think that's supposed to say they owe PHAs. So if they owe another housing authority money that was due under a HAP contract for damages of the unit or overpayment of subsidy or another violation in which the, the HAP payment was paid and it shouldn't have been, then they need to set up payment plans with that PHA. And if they breach the terms of that repayment agreement with them, or if they're in one with CRHA and breach agreement, if they engage in threatening or violent or abusive behavior towards CRHA staff, or if they are absent from their assisted unit for a period of a hundred and eighty days or greater. Again, we will use evidence of the preponderance of evidence that indicates that the household member has engaged in activities. This says whether they've been arrested or convicted, but we kind of talked about that before. We'll consider the seriousness of the case, especially with the respect of how it's going to affect other residents' safety or property and how it's going to affect other members of the family who were not involved in the actions or the failure to act. The extent of participation of other individuals in the family, the length of time since the violation occurred, and the recent history and likelihood of favorable conduct in the future. Evidence of criminal conduct will be considered if it indicates a demonstrable risk of safety to property. Record of arrest will not be used as the sole basis of any termination. It could trigger an investigation into that. And of course, when it comes to VAAL, the protections against termination, there's four specific protections against termination for victims under domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault. So we've talked a little bit about the owners. They are in a contractual obligation to the housing authority, which is the HAP contract. They are responsible for, you know, making sure that they uphold their end of the lease, just like we're asking the participants to. They cannot have any principal interest in the property that they're renting, so they can't rent to family members or even, you know, distant down the line family members. There are other restrictions that says board members or, you know, other, other people within the community that would have ties to the CRHA program cannot be the assistant landlords. And CRJ is trying really hard to build a landlord pool beyond just the ones that, you know, tend to house the most of our participants. I always sell the HTV program as an insurance policy for landlords. And especially with COVID, like so many people lost their income and they didn't have the, the program to fall back onto to make sure that their rent was paid. So, I mean, landlords would be so much better off if they were participating in this program because they have an insurance policy that if income goes away, there's still going to be payments of rent made to them. And, you know, it, it's an extra set of eyes to help make sure that their, their lease agreements are being followed and that their properties are being taken care of. And, you know, like I said before, it's also a protection policy for the tenants because they have CRJ to make sure the landlords are doing what they promised to in the lease and that they're taking care of the properties. So we're going to work to build a landlord recruitment program. I have started with the last couple of months, rent, HAP payments that have gone out, including mail-ins and with the checks, ensuring that the landlords are getting them. I'm going to continue doing that each month to, you know, promote for the landlords that we already have, but I also want to build a database of landlords that we're not currently working with and introduce them to the program and, you know, bring them to our side of the world. The goal is to hold some recruitments. Right now, I know it's going to have to be virtual and that's not ideal. But eventually, I'm hoping that we can have some community But eventually, I'm hoping that we can have some community meetings and um work with some other community partners to bring more people to the table and expand our program for our participants. The program integrity part, I swear y'all were almost there. Um this talks about what CRHJ's responsibilities are to ensure that the funds that we receive from HUD are spent and utilized um within, you know, our regulations and what our policy says and that there's not um uh errors that are costing the agency more money than they should and that, you know, if there's any uh uh complaints of fraud or things that they're being investigated. So this, this part has not changed much, I mean, it still talks about all of the things that CRHJ needs to do to ensure that the program is running at uh full speed at the, the safest and most uh effective way that it can. And um our annual CMAP requires a lot of quality control of everything that's done. And so that will help detect the errors and the program abuse and things like that to make sure that we can utilize our top dollar to help the most people. Um you know, we will investigate any type of complaints that come to us for um abuse or fraud from the program, but it's going to have to take more than just, hey, she's doing this, you know, there needs to be some viable information in order to warrant. Um us going to that point, we're not going to just harass people because uh he said, she said. Um there's special types of housing that can be put into the program. Um before, it used to be, you know, just um single-family homes, apartments, townhomes, manufactured homes. But they have expanded out some to provide like congregate housing. Um I think we have a couple of participants who are living in a, an assisted living type facility. Um we uh, I don't think we have many manufacturer homes, that's not something that I see in this area much, but when I worked on the Stanton side of the mountain, we did have several uh manufacturer homes. And you know, there's some shared homes and um other options, we do have several single-room occupancy um vouchers at the crossings. This is my favorite chapter. That cartoon says it all, what are our ambitions? Our ambitions is to streamline our processes um so that we're running like the well-oiled machine and we're not always chasing our tails. And we have more money to do the things that we need to do with the extra time that we have to continue building this program. And administration of the program is huge. Um it's not as easy as issuing vouchers and changing rents and proceeding to do this on repeat. Um there are a lot of financial aspects to the HCV program that has to be monitored. I swear right now, I feel like we're doing it on the daily basis. Um the uh subsidy standards, the, the payment standards, they are issued by HUD once a year based on the area averages of rentals in the um market. So those have to be updated annually, our utility allowance schedules were adopted via HDAs. So um they update theirs on July, we have to update those annually, so that has to be established into the program and utilized and calculated um at the right times incorrectly. Obviously, we have informal reviews and hearings that happen quite often. We have to monitor, has there been any overpayments to families or owners um on behalf of um either, either the family or the owner, we're overpayments or due back from one or the other, or we owe more money to someone because something wasn't calculated correctly. The, the CMAP is the annual audit process, but it literally happens every single month. Um there are aspects of this that has to be captured on a monthly basis and reported at the end of the year. Uh this is kind of what scores the Section Eight program and HUD's eyes to see if it's a viable program or not. The record keeping is intense with any of the HUD programs. Um it goes even further to where we have to request information from uh the Department of Health on anybody who has had elevated blood levels to make sure none of them are uh CRHJ HCV participants, and we have to report that to HUD. Uh we always have to mon- monitor our dollars to make sure we're not in a position of shortfall, that we have enough money coming in to continue issuing vouchers, continue assisting those vouchers that are already in place. And then, of course, the uh Violence Against Women Act, we've talked about this many times. Um it's, it's really intensified to make sure that there are protections out there for individuals who need that. Informal reviews and informal hearings are two different things. Informal reviews are granted to applicants. Um it provides them the right to appeal decisions that are made from the agency. Um there are some areas that they don't get to appeal. Uh they don't get to appeal if the family, for our ruling of the family unit size, if it's in accordance to our subsidy standard. They don't get to appeal if we refuse to grant an extension of their voucher. They don't get to appeal if we um don't grant approval for tenancy. Um and that would be probably because of either the thirty, forty percent rule, it's not affordable. Um and HUD won't allow us to do it, or the unit itself has HQS deficiencies and it's not safe, safety or sanitary. Or um if we determine that the unit size is not acceptable within those HQS uh requirements due to the family size and composition. Um pretty much anything else they can ask for review on. Um it must be made in writing and delivered to CRHJ either in person or by mail uh within ten business days um from the day of the letter of denial of assistance. We will schedule and send written notice of the informal review within ten business days of family's request. Uh informal hearing is for participants. It has the same um cans and cans. Um we must provide a participant opportunity to, in a formal hearing uh in basis to, on the determination basis of their annual income or adjusted income. Uh in determination of the appropriate utility allowance for tenant-paid utilities. Uh in determination of the unit size in accordance with the subsidy standard. Uh if we terminate their assistance due to family actions or inactions. If we terminate assistance due to be an absent from the unit for greater than a hundred and eighty days. Or if we terminate the family's uh family self-sufficiency account. Um with the informal hearing, uh it has to again be made in request, written request delivered to the housing authority either by hand or first-class mail within ten business days of the notice of termination. Um we must in turn schedule the meeting with them within ten days of receiving the request. Uh participants and CRHJ are permitted to pre-hearing discovery rights, meaning um if we're terminating for a reason, they get to examine any documentation regarding that. And the same, you know, if they have something that they are saying it was um done incorrectly for, we can ask for copies of that to review prior to the hearing. At the family's expense, they may have uh legal representation. And at their expense too, they can request um copies of anything and everything that's in their file. I believe the policy says it's like twenty-five cent per page over so many pages. Um the informal hearing can be conducted by any person approved by CRHJ other than person who made the decision to terminate or they're supporting it. Um the person conducting the hearing must issue a written decision, briefly stating the reason for the decision, any factual determinations relating to the decision. Um and the hearing officer must mail the notice of hearing decision to the participant on the same day, as well as to CRHJ. The executive director does have the authority to overturn the hearing officer's decision. Um if the decision exceeded the authority of the hearing officer or the decision conflicted with HUD regulations, requirements, or is otherwise contrary to federal, state or local laws. VAWAA, um it was initiated in twenty thirteen, it has gained speed expeditiously over the past couple of years. Uh CRHJ will make every effort to um make sure that every participant and every landlord is aware of the VAWAA protections that are in place for HCV participants. We will be posting um in the office, all of these uh notifications that you see on the screen. And then um we also provide owners and manu- managers information about the rights and obligations of the participants under VAWAA. Uh we will do it at the beginning of participation and annually after that. We have, um in the policy, we have a list of community partners that if we believe that there's a instance of any type of domestic violence that we will, with the participant's permission, um refer them to, to seek assistance and we will continue to grow community partnerships with um different entities in the community that would be able to uh help family members who are in one of these situations. This is our last chapter. Um I did not put anything together for it because project-based vouchers are not something that we're focusing on right now. Um we will be focusing on them as we start to ramp up our redevelopment and put them into play. But there is some likelihood that parts of this chapter will come back to the board for uh further approval um as we get a little more into the project-based voucher world. Um everything in this part right now is based off of Safe Harbor. Um and since we're not utilizing project-based vouchers at the moment, um there's, there may be some key demographic or jurisdictional or even clientele um areas that we need to tweak when it comes to the CRHJ policy part, so um I just didn't put anything together with that, this one yet because I don't know a lot about project-based vouchers, we're all learning this one together. So that is my presentation, I will gladly answer any questions that anybody has. And um like I told Lisa, I am more than available to any of you if you want to have some one-on-one conversations um to further explain how the HCV program works, so this was definitely a quick version of it.
Um so I have a question, I was really eager to hear about the shared housing options. Um in part because I think that um shared housing seems like a really good way to increase affordability. But also, I know that there are a number of um people who are just single occupants who aren't necessarily looking for an entire unit themselves. Can you just say a little bit more about what, like what the um inspection process looks like when it comes to shared housing, how that all works?
Um I would gladly like to look into that a little bit more myself, that's not something that we have um ever dealt with, I think it's more of a new rollout when it comes to the type of housing that HUD allows, but um I will gladly do a sidebar with you and we can learn that one together.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I probably should be in that conversation as well.
Come on, me and you are going to be best friends by the time this is over, aren't we?
Probably so, I just don't want to get people thinking they're going to live in a house and then
Oh no, I'm, I'm with you.
That locality come along and say, this is not allowed here.
Yeah, I'm a hundred percent with you.
And I can just tell you right now, some of the localities that I've worked with, the definition of family is different than what HUD's new definition of family is. And so you have to be careful about too.
Yes ma'am, I agree.
You know, I, I accept that the legality needs to be a minimum standard certainly. But I also, you know, in the um, the market that we're in, I, I would like to be, you know, aggressive about finding uh available housing situations for uh people in need, so uh you know, we, we don't want to put any, we, we don't want to take advantage in any way, but I would love to see uh you know, what some of those limits are that we could push up against.
I agree, and that, that's um one of the um, the aspects of the landlord outreach. You know, I want to see what's in our market, what's out there that we may not be even aware is out there. And with these new housing types as well, you know, there might be things that people thought, well, this isn't going to work, but now under these new rules it may. So I definitely think that it's definitely worth um all of us looking into it a little bit more and seeing what other options we can provide to our participants.
Yeah, back to the, to the co-housing point, um you know, there, there's a lot of seniors that are really kind of uh overhoused. Uh you know, so some kind of um co-housing could really be uh, uh an untapped market for us.
I agree with you. Any other questions I can answer right now? Chair Rucker, I'm going to turn it back over to you.
All right, thank you, I know you, you probably need a little break.
A little bit, yeah, I don't think I have I've only practiced this like five times a day because I am not a very competent public speaker, so. And what I know in and out probably came across as, that's ramble, so.
You did a great job.
Thank you very much.
I had a hard time looking at that document, figuring out what was most relevant.
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Sales and I put most of that together and I think it took us several weeks of back and forth, so.
Yeah, thank you, that was awesome.
You're welcome.
Um do, does everyone need a brief, Mr. Sales, I have a question for you. I'm thinking maybe we should take, it's been what, an hour and forty-five minutes, take a brief break, how much? I'm just looking ahead here um in the agenda. Do you think we should, like, usually the annual plan brings up many questions and discussions, so.
Well, I think today is supposed to be a very brief discussion.
Oh, okay, okay.
introductory conversation about the annual plan. But um we do need, uh, we have a re- there's a resolution attached to the admin plan that will need to be passed or not passed.
Can we ask overall questions?
Of course.
Well, I've got several, sorry. So are we going to get a hard copy of this document at some point, because I tried to read through this in a week and didn't go through.
Yeah, we can, we can put a binder together for all the commissioners.
And possibly a copy of that presentation, because I do think it's good to have that information. And how in the world are folks who want to rent supposed to know all this? For God's sakes.
They wouldn't have to know everything that's in the admin plan, we work with them through what information is needed during the briefing. And that normally takes a couple of hours. Um our admin plan is on our website as well and it has been uh for the, at least the last forty-five days for individuals to access. Uh and once it is approved, or if it is not approved, uh but once it is approved by the board, it will um permanently be housed on our website.
Okay.
There's a copy, there will be a copy in all the rental offices as well.
Are there like, and again, excuse me for being so new, are there like uh tenant liaisons or something to help, I mean, if, if there are folks with some learning disabilities or something that may not be able to read? I mean, this is a lot to take in for someone who may not be able to understand.
Yeah, so we have two housing um HCV specialists um that assist the individuals with vouchers. And we also have um videos now on our website for the HCV program, uh briefing videos. Uh we purchased those videos during COVID because we needed to put out a lot of vouchers on the street. And we do that in the uh typical setting of fifteen or twenty people in a small conference room. Uh so we did purchase those videos and they are on our website.
And then, um so I've been in local government twenty years. I can acronym somebody all day. But I think that maybe if we had a uh a legend for all those acronyms, that that might help somewhere in that document. Because there's a, I mean, you know.
I can send you a link, there's actually one on the HOV website that breaks down ninety percent of the acronyms they use, so. I will make sure I get you that, um I will provide you with the briefing documents that gives a written um presentation to the participants of the key things they need to know. We even go as far as creating a cheat sheet for them so that they can figure out how we break down what their income is. We usually provide them with what the thirty percent and forty percent of income is and how we calculate everything else. So we do our best to make it as easy for our crazy complicated world for them as we can. And I can promise you, we answer lots of questions throughout every single day. Like we don't leave them hanging trying to figure out what's next. Um especially if we know there's participants that work with like Region Ten or Pace or something like that. We make sure that their case managers are involved from step one to step zero. Uh I think during the reasonable accommodation slide, it talked primarily about um if there are participants who need further assistance with things like that. And I think one point on the, the policy says that if they need a representate, repres- um representative to uh manage things like um providing income changes or attending the annual recertifications or things like that, that's a reasonable accommodation we can grant them. So that, you know, their, their person, the person that they're used to that works with them on a daily basis can handle making sure that they understand what's what. We have a great relationship with most of the community partners that work with our um, our clientele. Uh I think we spend just as much talk, time talking with the, the um support staff that work directly with the households as we do with the households. that work directly with the households as we do with the households themselves.
I, I say that, I have a, a short story that it, it's always in my head as I think about things like this when there's so much regulation. And again, I, I've dealt with regulation for 20 years. I dealt with a family once. It wasn't directly related to me, but this kid who was six years old is going to school and trying to get in the MACA program. And somebody came into this household, to this mother who was had a second grade education, could not read and plopped down a book this thick in order to get their kids some further education. And I thought, how in the heck that's going to happen? Because the mom can't read all the documents to even get the kid to, to be furthered along in their education. So when I hear this and I see this 400 page, what was it, two?
It's almost 500 pages. You're right.
Almost 500 pages. And then we had a lot of legalese in there and you even had to say may and shall or may and must. And so I, I always, my, I always start thinking, hold up, I hope we've got folks that are sitting down and having an explanation and helping walk through this. So thank you.
You're welcome. And I will say that like the HCV staff, they've been in place for several years and they're very apt to their clientele. And they're very good about if, if they can see that puzzle, look, they'll take that next step to say, you know, I, I kind of see you're not understanding, what can I explain further? And you know, the, the grand scheme of things is we, we attempt to the best of our ability not to send somebody out the door who don't understand what it is that's happening. Mr. Sales can attest, there's one particular participant that I've been working with for the past two months, I believe. And like the same conversation happened every day. Like almost to the point that we just copied the email and sent it again because, you know, there was that disconnect there and they couldn't quite understand it. So I'm, we, we do go above and beyond to do our best to educate them on what their responsibilities are. But the whole legal backend of it, you know, there, there's so much of it that pertains particularly to the housing authority and not so much the participants. I mean, it's like our responsibility to carry out, not the participants' responsibility to carry out. And that's what a lot of that policy speaks to, like the, the participant part of it is there, but it's like just a fraction of everything that's actually the housing authority's responsibility. Little fun fact, HUD is the most heavily regulated federally regulated program there is. Their regulations trifold any other federal program.
Fun fact, I knew that for some reason.
Yep. Probably, probably heard us talk about it. So yeah, I am available to anybody who has like one-on-one questions and wants to understand certain parts of the policy further. I do not mind whatsoever breaking it down. Even help building it, reading back through it to put this together. There were aspects that's like, huh, okay, that's pretty cool to know. So I mean, it doesn't hurt whatsoever to have questions thrown my way. And then as this gets approved, then the CRHA staff will be going through it again too. So I mean, not opposed whatsoever to continue answering any questions or helping a further understanding of any parts of it.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
What was I going to ask? Oh, today I think there was a meeting that I couldn't attend, but it was from the Thomas Jefferson Planning District, I believe. Was anyone able to join? It, it sounded like a good tool for us. I can't read. I can't even remember exactly what the details were, but like a housing locator website.
I don't know if any of us attended, but we have been in constant communication with them about the development of the tool. And so we are both looking at it as a way of putting our own properties on that list while also utilizing that list for the HCV program. And I spoke with Todd and even before TJ PDC started their, their tool. When I was with the city, we were looking at the Housing Navigator Services and what that looked like. And so we talked yesterday, Todd and I, Todd Niemeyer with the Human Rights Commission about adding additional units to that list because we've located some landlords that aren't traditional HCV landlords. I don't know if they're traditional affordable housing landlords, but they weren't traditional HCV landlords. And so this year, when we, when the housing market was in flux because of COVID and we were able to put out these vouchers. So we found landlords that weren't traditional HCV landlords. So giving that information to them is a positive way of moving forward and ensuring that everyone has access to the same units. Because we're all trying to do the same thing at the end of the day.
No, it sounded good. Sounded helpful.
And I think that new law that Virginia passed back in July as well is helping with what Mr. Sales was speaking of. Because you know, before people could say, no, I'm not taking section eight, now they can't.
Yeah, yeah. I think that is helpful. Other, other questions? And it, it sounds like if I have a, I guess, this is just a question with the resolution. If you're still looking at it internally and working out details, things like Ms. Green's question about, you know, zoning or, or particular aspects, like particular laws for each county or city, now that we're in this MOU. It does seem like maybe there's some, maybe that's part of the MOU, who checks in on some of this. Will we be able to make amendments? I'm just thinking if there's any outstanding questions from tonight that.
So I think I missed a key part back in the beginning. HUD releases what's called PIH notices pretty much on the daily. And in those notices, they provide new guidance for different programs. If one would come up for the HCV program, if it's a must, we're going to adopt it, inform everybody that it's been adopted. But if it's a may and we have to create a policy on it, that will come to the board each time something like that happens to adopt it into our policy, you know, and release it out to the public. So at any time that the policy is amendable through the committee after public notice.
And I'm, I'm anticipating a amendment relatively soon. So we are currently in the, in the running for some mainstream vouchers. So the preferences will change on that. So we'll have to amend it once that, that award is finalized. So there will probably be a change in a couple of months. The goal really is to try to get it approved now so we can open up our waitlist for the HCV program. At the moment, we have a waitlist of zero. And we anticipate some vouchers becoming open due to some expiring that are on the street now. And we do have individuals that have contacted almost, contacted me almost every, every week, sometimes two or three times a day. And I send them all to Ms. Height. So we do need to get their waitlist opened.
Okay, that, that's helpful. That's really helpful. So if there are further, I mean, some of these questions are kind of long-term, like the zoning thing would take a long time to figure out how, you know, if we even have the staff ability to check on, time to check on some of that. But that is helpful. And I know the project-based vouchers section is going to be changing. So, okay.
For the zoning thing, we could put it in the application if you, you know, if you want to.
That's true.
You could just say, are you meeting local zoning regulations? And if they check and sign it.
Yeah, good point. Good point. Okay. So do you all, the commissioners, do you feel like you're ready to vote on this? As it stands, should I read, I'll read the resolution. Okay. So CRHA Resolution Number 1417, Resolution Authorizing the Approval of the Amended Charlottesville Redevelopment and Housing Authority Housing Choice Voucher Administration Plan. Whereas the Charlottesville Redevelopment and Housing Authority, CRHA, or the authority, administers a housing choice voucher program, this HCV program in conjunction with its mission of providing quality and affordable housing. Whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, requires the authority to have an administrative plan to establish policies for implementation and oversight of the HCV program in a manner consistent with HUD requirements and local goals and objectives, the HCV administrative plan. Whereas HUD requires the authority to review each HCV administrative plan on a regular basis and revise it as needed to ensure that it remains compliant with changes in HUD regulations and agency operations. Whereas any revision to CRHA's HCV administrative plan must be approved by the Board of Commissioners of CRHA, the board, before submission to HUD. Whereas the authority's current HCV administrative, administrative plan last revised in September 2018 has recently been updated to reflect changes in HUD regulations and CRHA operations. And whereas the board desires to approve the revised HCV administrative plan dated as of October 1st, 2020, and to authorize submission of a copy of the updated HCV administrative plan to HUD. Now, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Charlottesville Redevelopment and Housing Authority as follows. One, the authority revised Housing Choice Voucher Administrative Plan dated as of October 1st, 2020 is hereby approved. Two, the executive director or his designee is hereby authorized to take any and all actions and to execute and deliver any and all agreements, instruments and other documents as may be necessary or desirable to facilitate implementation of the revised HCV administrative plan and to submit a copy of the revised HCV administration, administrative plan to HUD. All actions previously taken by the authority in connection with the transactions contemplated by this resolution are hereby ratified and approved. This resolution shall be in effect from and after the date of its adoption. Okay. And then it says adopted today, 12th of November, 2020. Questions? Are we ready to move ahead with this? Okay. So I think we need a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Sales, could you do the roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Green?
Hi.
Commissioner Osteen?
Hi.
Commissioner Goldblatt?
Hi.
Commissioner Dr. Henry?
Hi.
Chair Rucker?
Hi.
Commissioner Walker? Commissioner Slaughter? Motion pass five to zero.
Right, thank you. Okay, now do people need a two, a five-minute break before launching into the, the brief update of the annual plan? Or do you want to just plow on through?
I will say, I think Kathleen is shooting at 10 minutes. I think so.
I think plowing through sounds good.
Okay, let's do it.
Hello, everyone. Yep, I'm going to try to keep it brief. Just to remind everyone, we, we're also going to have a meeting next week on the 18th. So there'll be other opportunities as well. Was everyone able to access the plan on the website? Great. So every year we do an annual plan. You know, some years it gets done a little earlier than others. But it's a comprehensive guide to all of our policies and operations. A big part of what I'm going to focus on tonight are just changes and goals that have been adapted just to get that on everyone's radar so that we can, you know, drill into that more. The plan is due to HUD 75 days prior to our fiscal year beginning, which is April 1st. We have to submit to HUD by the second week of January. So that's part of the timeline that we're on now. I met with our resident advisory board, our council on September 23rd. And we had a discussion on some of the housing needs, resources, some of the policies, one of which I was glad to see was just approved. And other items that we wanted to focus on. As you saw, attached, the plan was kind of huge this year attached. We had the new procurement policy as well as this revised administrative plan draft. And I'll note in the final plan that it's been approved. We also, I've attached demographic information. It's from our resident characteristic reports, which come from PIC on the HUD website. It's the information we submit to HUD. And I'll be updating that also with some probably November data before I submit the final report. We also, you know, because of the pandemic, we've have to tradition to virtual public meetings. Usually these meetings are held in community centers at different sites. I think the majority of you have been at those meetings. They're usually at night and we, you know, I, I sort of miss being able to have them this year, but we're working really hard to have the meetings available on the 18th. There are going to be two times during the day. There's going to be an option of both a dial-in or a Zoom meeting. We are also, you know, this meeting is virtual, our public hearing is going to be virtual. So it's, it's just a very different feel this year. Part of what I do is I take all the comments that we receive when we meet with the resident advisory board, anything I might hear from you tonight or throughout the planning period. And also particularly all the comments I hear on the 18th. And I will put that together and attach that to the plan. And when recommended, we'll make adjustments possibly to items on the plan and note that in the attachments so that people know where adjustments were made due to feedback we got from the board or from residents that we took into consideration. If you look at our website, you can also see last year's plan and our five-year plan. There's a lot of goals from our previous plan and our five-year plan that are still in progress. So when I spoke with our resident advisory board, it was recommended that, you know, we carry this over and we look at it. I think it was Brandon who had the great suggestion that we look at it more of a strategic plan in the reporting. So I changed the formatting a little bit. I hope it was a little easier to read this year. It's still a work in progress. But some of the, this is the most important page in my presentation tonight. These are the items that we really want to drill down on. First, at the top of the list is safety on our public housing sites. You know, we're talking about possible camera policies and ways to improve security. Melinda also talked too about homeownership programs. We're starting that off with our new admin plan. And, and we'll be looking at other opportunities as well with some of the development work we do. We're rebuilding our family self-sufficiency program. We are looking at all types of opportunities for funding for that. And we're wide open to ideas as well, and I welcome conversation on that. The, the CCDC is something we've also been looking at. Is that we want to really grow that out at some point, you know, let that arm flex itself, possibly move some staff there. We've been having a lot of conversations about, you know, all of our redevelopment staff eventually being housed there. You know, it's something that we just want to have more conversations on. Also, we've been having increasing conversations about setting up a, an actual nonprofit arm. And this would be a way to access more funding to really build out resident service opportunities. And it's something that we're hoping the resident service committee can talk about as well. We just, you know, we've been really fortunate this year with some of the funds we've been able to access. When I'm finished, I'll let Mr. Sales talk a little bit about a little success we had this evening. Let's see, another topic, which I don't know if we'll be tackling this year or not, but we really want to get it on everyone's radar, is researching our ability to issue bonds. You know, that's come up and we want to, we want to look into that. We want to find out more. Focusing more on the long-term agency sustainability plan. I know, you know, that's in the works, it's happening and we just want to really keep that on everyone's radar. I know, you know, that's in the works, it's happening, and we just wanna really keep that on everyone's radar. Mainstream vouchers, I think that's gonna be something that we talk about a lot in coming months. And I think it might move us to maybe have a presentation from that, maybe one of our future work sessions. And increasing the agency's ability to do internal project management for construction, so that, you know, eventually we will be able to manage projects and have, you know, the capacity in-house to handle that. And finally, as we ended with Linda's presentation, too, project-based vouchers and li-tech policies and programs. For the low-income tax credit, there's a lot of rules and regulations, and there's gonna be a lot of policies that are being adapted for that. So that should be part of almost every board meeting for the rest of the year, something with either PVV or li-tech policies. So I just wanted to have that on everyone's radar. We have sent the draft to the city to review in order for us to get them to sign off on it. They have to consult with Neighborhood Services and look at the consolidated plan and make sure that we're consistent with that. I know Mr. Norris has had many conversations about that, and we're gonna continue to be doing that. But eventually what we're looking at is for them to sign a certification form that will be attached to the final plan when we submit it to HUD. And it will be in the packet for the Board's approval in December. The next steps, as I said before, we're having a community meeting on the 18th, it's gonna be at 4:00 and 6:00 PM. We've published that in the paper. We're gonna be talking to FAR, I put together a flyer, and I think FAR is gonna probably make some adjustments to it, and we're gonna figure out the best ways to get it out. Next week, we're trying to decide if we're gonna do it on Monday or Tuesday, which day's gonna be better, and we're gonna try to get that everywhere. Probably gonna have it on Facebook as well, just try to get the word out. We're gonna take all those notes, as I said before, and compile those. I'm also hoping during those meetings to hear a lot of feedback about our capital funds program, so that we can use that information in the coming months, and we're working on updating that as well. On the 17th, we're gonna have our hearing for the annual plan. And that'll also be held virtually, to be followed by the Board meeting, where we're hoping to have a resolution on that. And then the entire packet is sent to HUD for review and approval, as I said before, by mid-January. And then we start all over again, and we wanna start a lot earlier next year. We did, we did a pretty good job at getting it on the agenda this year with everything happening, but we really wanna start early next year. So you're gonna be hearing about this at the beginning of the summer. And we're gonna be probably wanting to just revamp a lot of things and make it a much more user-friendly document. And that is all I have for you all. Questions? I think I kept it to the 10 minutes.
That was really great, thank you Kathleen. I just was hoping, and I don't wanna extend this conversation longer than it needs to go right now, but I was wondering if you could just say a little bit more about developing the nonprofit arm, if you guys have ideas. I mean, that sounds pretty exciting, ideas about how you'd like to use that.
Did you wanna talk on that, John, or do you want me to?
I think you've been working on it a lot longer than I have, but stuff gotten here. Kathleen has really focused a lot on grant funding opportunities, and we've, like, every week it seems like she's looking at a new opportunity for grant funding. And a lot of the grants require a nonprofit. We are quasi-government agencies, so we fall right in the middle. Most of the city programs and grants allow us a platform, but some of the bigger ones, like the Lowe's and Home Depot programs, they require you to be a nonprofit. So most housing authorities have already ventured out there to get nonprofit status because of those opportunities that exist.
And part of that is, you know, we would need to have agreement from the Board and would also need to speak to the City about it. And that's why we wanna make that an additional goal with our annual plan this year. But before we do so, we just wanted to hear feedback from the Board on that.
Well, I think it's an awesome idea, especially, I mean, I think having you. But I mean, you know, I think in the past, there just hasn't even been the bandwidth to go for many grants, because the staff was pretty thin and, you know, but with this new structure in place where, you know, that you can devote more time to this, I think it would be awesome, and I mean, there's no end of programs that could, you know, flow from that or ways to find grant funding to push money into, you know, the existing and maybe new programs. So I really like that idea.
Hey, what's the good news, Mr. Sales? I don't want you to forget to tell us.
Well, I'm gonna let Kathleen share, because Kathleen did all the legwork, I just helped bring it to the end, so Kathleen, please share.
I was kinda late getting to the Board meeting, because I was at the CDBG Task Force. And we really made a big ask for a three-year grant, but we, we didn't get that, but we got a one-year grant to start an eviction prevention program, to actually hire a staff person to go out and do prevention work with a little bit of funding for them to also have some assistance available for people who participate in the program. And very excited about that, we need it desperately right now.
Yeah.
We start getting some money from CBDG.
We got some and sent it FAR.
Oh, great.
Yep.
Good work, it's, it's really nice to see. I mean, you know, I think everything, it's, as was alluded to, the regulatory, I mean, just all of the little details take so much attention, it's hard to ever move forward and get into the kind of new programs, though. This is awesome.
Well, I'm gonna have Divinia send out a copy of the information I just went over, particularly so you can see the, the list of goals we wanna really focus on. And if anyone has questions, feel free to get back to me. I also just wanted to give a quick, you know, shout-out for the Resident Services Committee. I'm hoping Betsy Joy and Dr. Henry can come up with some dates soon and we'll get that launched. We're considering a couple of things with that, I've applied for a grant for $10,000 from the Vibrant Community Fund that we could use for that committee to get things started. And also, we're looking at having kind of a neighborhood crisis management group get built out from that committee. And we're hoping that, you know, share more information about that once the committee's able to get started on it. All right, well, thank you, everyone.
Can I ask one question on the annual plan, and it doesn't need to be discussed right now? And Mr. Osteen just texted me that he lost his internet, so he hung up on us purposely. The question about the project construction management, and have a succinct enough question now, but I'm just thinking that that makes a lot of sense on modernization in projects. And maybe just someone that, you know, we're not always going to have an entire community being redeveloped, so you know, I'm just wondering more about the intentions of that, but we can talk about that next time if you'd like.
I can give you a very short answer. So we would like to get to the point where we're looking at preventative maintenance when it comes to our properties. So we're looking at getting PNA's for all of our sites. And the project manager will be the lead person for the CFP program and also conduct the community engagement and working hand-in-hand to ensure that what's identified in the PNA, we're on top of. So we're not running into broke-down elevators, boiler systems, HVAC systems, hot water tank issues, roofing issues. So we really stay on top of those, because we are still a little ways away from developing some of our smaller sites, where they're getting to the point of useful life on some of the items, like mechanical items are gonna start, we start ticking up. And as we start pulling units offline, offline of public housing, our CFP dollars will drop. So we really need to make sure that we're staying on top of that.
Could you tell me what CFP means?
Capital Fund Program.
Got it.
Dollars provided by HUD for, it's supposed to be modernization of public housing, but it's never enough money to do anything.
Got it, I just, I can look it up, I just don't know what y'all are talking about.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, what's PNA?
Physical Needs Assessment.
Got it.
So that's something that should get done every five years, the last one we completed was in 2011.
Yep. We're also thinking long-term and, you know, aspiring to actually bring in more funds for the agency by doing different projects, not necess, it might be that we purchase property and develop it ourselves. Just gives us a lot more depth to, you know, focus on the future.
Yeah, no, that makes a lot, a lot, a lot of sense. I guess when I saw that, I was thinking of, you know, like this, the brand-new construction at South First Street, which definitely needs a lot of partners and is a much larger project, but that makes a lot of sense in what you're talking about.
And in the grand scheme of things, that, that individual will be doing that type of work. So the partnership we have right now with our redevelopment partners, they're providing a lot of capacity where we are lacking. So, but that isn't built to, it's not sustainable on their end. They aren't gonna do that for the next 15 years while we're redeveloping. The MOU is designed for us to slowly gain that capacity and knowledge to where we fully take over. And they're more of just a funding and providing advice instead of walking us through the entire process. So like, we have a huge development team right now with a lot of expertise. And Brano is gonna be one of those individuals that are gonna be helping us, he just popped on the camera, so I'll just make sure I call him out a little bit. He's gonna be one of those individuals that picks up the slack when they slowly start to back away with how much capacity they're providing us.
That's awesome, and maybe Brano, I don't know, you know, I don't think they're gonna be going away soon, but as they do start stepping away, like making sure you have backup, so you have the time to be in all the meetings and learn everything you can, you know, while we have them.
Hundred percent agree.
Okay, other questions?
About the nonprofit, Mr. Sales, you said that other housing authorities had done this?
Yep.
And so are you guys researching what they've done, and let's get the best of what they've done and not make the same mistakes?
Well, before I came here, I worked in, before I came to Charlottesville, I worked in Chesapeake. And Delphine Carnes, our attorney, is also the attorney for Chesapeake. So she was setting their nonprofit up when I was, actually, she had just set it up when I was leaving. So we'll work with her to do that for us as well, help us with the VA laws. So we're protecting the agency, because it is a potential liability for the agency, since it is, the agency in general is responsible for that nonprofit, so we'll make sure we're working with her throughout the entire process.
Thanks.
Is that the same as the redevelopment arm?
No, the nonprofit, so the redevelopment arm is actually a corporation, it's not a nonprofit. So the nonprofit, it's going to be a separate nonprofit that we're using to do some of the residential services, resident services work, because a lot of times you can't use federal funds for that. So we're hoping that building a nonprofit will allow us to get funds outside from private sources that wanna tax-deductible donations. Right now, you provide donations to us, it doesn't benefit you. But with the nonprofit, we can actually give that benefit. And at some point, we would like to have our Board also working to help us with the donations and assisting us with that. Because we are doing a lot of good work, we're getting a lot of good press, I think the community is starting to see it, the residents are seeing it. So I think more agencies and organizations will be willing to provide funding for us, but we need to make it really easy for them. And other agencies have this nonprofit status, so they're directly benefiting from it by donating money. So we just need to be on the same level foot as a Habitat or AHIP or LEAP.
Yep. That makes a lot of sense. Other questions, and then we've got one more round or opportunity for public comment before we close. Okay, let's go to public comment, and I don't know, Mr. Sales, do you know how to bring, do whatever we have to do, unmute people so they can speak?
Yes, I can do that right now, we have Brandon Collins right now.
Hooray. The last time I commented, after I was done, it booted me off the thing, and I had to use a different email to get on. So I'm hoping that doesn't happen after this comment, but since you're mostly done, I guess that would be okay. I, I think this is a really great meeting, I wanna say first, congratulations on CDBG. That has been a long desire from some with FAR, particularly one nod in her head, really to really start going after that money for Housing Authority. And I just, I think we all appreciate the work that's been put into grant writing, and I think it's having a really positive effect on Housing Authority. I was really excited about that presentation on the admin plan. It was a lot of information. I was glad to have the refresher. I just wanna say to Commissioner Green, you know, if that seems like a lot, wait till you see the ACOP, which is the Public Housing, similar document. And it is really hard, and it is really hard for residents, and that's one thing that FAR can really help with. We are able to help residents with issues with HCV. We don't get a ton of requests for help for that, and I think one thing that stuck out to me in the admin plan, the consistent thing that we get is when people are denied eligibility. And sometimes it's out of sheer luck that they realize they could come talk to us and learn about the informal review process. So I just really encourage Housing Authority to promote FAR and Legal Aid when there are those kinds of situations to just make sure that those notices include, you know, if you, if you disagree with this, you know, please contact FAR or Legal Aid, consider an ineligible, or sorry, an informal review. Also, we, I'm sorry, got a little sidetracked. I was really excited to hear about the different options for the seasonal workers, the folks who work for Airmark, being able to choose which path works best for them on how they would handle their rent decrease. And I just would like to sort of double-check and throw that out there on the public housing side as well. I'm not really sure where it stands with public housing right now in the ACOP. If that's not an option currently, I really hope y'all can move towards that option quickly. That could be a huge help, I know we went through some wrangling on that a while back. We are very much looking forward to seeing that waiting list open and just really happy that the admin plan's together. And as you're putting together those hard copies, I would love one for the FAR office, so that we can better assist people. I think if you're looking for resources to get the quick and dirty on HUD housing programs, if you go to National Low-income Housing Coalition, publishes a book every year, and they have an updated one for 2020, I'm gonna put it in the chat, you can read it online. And you can, you know, at your leisure, just look up things that you wanna learn about. I mean, it tells you about everything, PVVs, BBRA, anything, so if you're a commissioner and wanna learn more or just curious about how other things work, it's a really great resource. And I am enthusiastic about the annual plan and just really grateful for the collaboration. And what is new in the process this year is that FAR, as the Resident Advisory Board, was able to meet with TRHA staff and talk about goals in a pretty free, free setting. And just really pleased to see that that's all made it into the draft plan, I think that's super awesome and really And I think that's super awesome and really encourages us all to continue this great collaboration on all aspects. So, that's, that's it.
Can I, Brandon, can I just follow up on one thing? I was thinking, as you were talking about, how difficult it is for residents to understand these regulations, Section 8 and public housing residents. And I wonder if this is something that might be a task to try to get some money from the Equity Center at UVA to develop a more user-friendly method to provide this, a video, something, like they have a lot of expertise there. And then the other thing that I'd just like to say for the record as a UVA employee is that it's shameful that there are people who work at UVA and need to worry about seasonal rent problems because of the way that their work is structured. So, UVA needs to do better, it needs to pay its contractors a living wage all year round. And frankly, it should be bringing a lot of those contractors back in-house.
Very well said. I do think there is a role to play in being able to educate residents with more user-friendly materials. It's something that FAR tries to do on a given subject. I think training is also really important. That's why I liked tonight's presentation while it was very dry. This is the kind of, kind of stuff that FAR can really take in and, and can work with residents on, on, on explaining these things. We're, we're just now having a conversation with, about public housing admissions and orientation and, and how we can sort of reintegrate FAR into that work. And I think, you know, once we can kind of get that fleshed out and in process, we should be looking to do that for Section 8 as well for the HCV program. I think that would be really great. It's more work, it's more stuff to do. But I think, you know, if we can get that done through public housing, we ought to be able to do similar for HCV.
You know, we'll say, Brandon, to address the seasonal rent for the public housing, we will eventually be tackling ACOP, but we wanted to do one, one plan at a time because there is a massive lift. Like, it took us weeks going back and forth, and HUD had to approve the plan. So, it was even longer because they were literally going through every word, wanting us to justify everything that we decided we wanted to do. So, it was not easy and the ACOP is going to be just as hard. But we are going to eventually do that and we look forward to partnering with FAR and Legal Aid to get that done.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon, for the link.
Oh, and if, if you all are okay, I could speak with Ms. Goldblatt about the Equity Center. And since I work at the School of Architecture, there's a lot of graphic designy people and students who I always think would be great at translating some of the words into, to visuals. So, maybe we can find, you know, a group of students to help with that too as a, as a project.
That's great. As a member of the English department, we're specialists at taking things that are easy and making them as complicated as possible. So, I think your expertise would be very useful.
But you can write a sentence. I'm not so good at that. Okay, so.
So, one thing about that is sometimes it's not, I mean, I'm, when I was having that conversation, it's, it's not even necessarily about, you know, there are folks that maybe can't read as well, but this is a lot of legal jargon.
Yeah.
There's a lot of, and obviously, acronyms and things. And, and so, I like the picture idea, I like the equity idea, Ms. Goldblatt. Also, are we translating this to other languages? Is there somewhere we have this translated? And do we have a translator?
It's funny, am I still on? Yes. We're actually, so we have a really cool partnership that we're still kind of trying, dying to, to use through a community foundation grant. We also got hooked up with a year's connection with Catcha Fire, which is basically, it's almost like Uber for volunteers or something. So, we're actually getting ready to put out a request for translators for the various languages to help FAR develop some materials to be able to better reach people. I don't know if Housing Authority actually has that. I don't remember if y'all got that grant or not, but we ought to be able to collaborate if you didn't. And I think that could make translation a lot easier because, from, from what currently happens.
Do you, I wonder if we can, I'm sorry, Lisa, can we broaden the term translation to use it for translating it to English too? Like, you know, the, what, what we're talking about, making it easier to read and translating it into other languages? If we can do both with that.
Yes, because we, I've got a kid, and I don't remember which school this was, but one of the schools just sent out something recently. I don't remember if it's a city or county, but, and they said, I think they said, we're going to translate this into our top eight languages. And I'm thinking, eight, eight languages, okay. So, I think we instantly maybe go to the Spanish language, but I think there are other languages that we need to translate.
And I saw in the admin plan, you know, we were talking about accommodations, there was translation, you know, different points about that. And, and so, maybe all this could kind of help back that up.
Right.
I will say, that is one of our weaknesses. We do not have good translation services, both when it comes to peer conversations like reexaminations, briefings. We've identified that as a weakness, so we're looking into what services are available. But the admin plan, I think that's something that no one ever really thinks about. What about individuals who don't speak English? And we actually have a number of them. I think we had one that turned down the voucher because they could not understand. So, that is a concern, and so, we will look into that. And Spanish is, I will say, Spanish is not our number two language in our public housing. It is not Spanish and it's not French either. So, it wouldn't, it might even, it might not even be in your top eight, Lisa. So, that is, that is one of our bigger problems that we're looking to solve.
Well, we do have a large community from the IRC center.
Yeah.
That comes, so there's, we have a large diverse language population, that's the word. So, I worry about that too. As I, as I say, every time I look at this stuff, when I, I, I see that kid and that mom's face trying to just get her kid a better, better education. And, and that wasn't about translation, that was just about, I, I can't read all these documents. So, I worry about that all the time.
Yep. Okay. Are there, other public comments? Or any, any comments generally? From anyone?
There's no one else that's in a public that has a hand raised at the moment.
All right. I am just energized by, you know, everyone's, you know, just work on this, it's amazing. Thank you all. And I kind of don't want to adjourn because it's fun to talk to you all, but it has, we're going on three hours, so. So, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Ms. Hyde, for the acronyms. And I'm adjourned.
I second. And I guess we have to do the roll call because we're virtual. Mr. Sales, can you do the roll call one more time?
Yes. Commissioner Goldblatt?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Dr. Henry?
Yes.
Chair Rucker?
Yes.
Commissioner Osteen? Commissioner Mayor Walker? Commissioner Slaughter? We are adjourned, adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. See you all.
All right, good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Joe? Thank you. Still on, dear commissioners, stakeholders, attach is a copy of the annual plan presentation. Attach is a copy of the annual plan presentation of this, on the board where, board, boards. Work session. CRHA board's work. Document to share, document to share from Ms. Kathleen Glenn matches from the, on the board work. Document to share from Ms. Document to share from Ms. Glenn. Dear commissioners and stakeholders. Dear commissioners and stakeholders. Dear commissioners.